Right.
Oh, okay. Here we are. Dayton Public Library Board of Trustees Meeting of Thursday, September fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. So the hybrid meeting. Is open public through the Zoom conferencing platform and it was, it is being recorded. And will be available on the library's YouTube channel. And with that, I'll call the meeting of the library trustees, meeting to order. Give the roll call, Ron O'Connor Chair.
Reader Russo Trustee, Anne Meitz and trustee, Jocelyn Tavarez Director.
Hey.
Zach Woodpoint Chair, the Friends of the Library.
Right, first order of business are some meeting minutes to be approved. Thank you, Jocelyn for. Bringing us up to date. Uh, as. Has everybody had an opportunity to review the minutes? Um. We recommend, we want to just do them all one batch, a single. Motion, also I'll entertain a motion to. Uh, approve the minutes of the April five, July thirteen, August ten, September seven, and September thirteenth. Uh, twenty twenty-three meeting. Of the. Library. Trustees.
I move, we approve the minutes of April fifth, July thirteenth, August tenth, September seventh, September thirteenth. This is Anne Meitz.
Do you have a second?
Reader Russo, second.
Any discussion, any comments? There is or omissions in the minutes? Hearing, hearing on, we'll vote, Ron O'Connor, I.
Reader Russo, I, Anne Meitz and I.
Minutes are approved. Thank you. All business update on two oh seven Main Street.
I don't have much of an update, but um. I don't know the results of the, I believe, the bid. For professional services, those two. I don't know the results of that process. Um, what I can tell you is that. The Mass Cultural Council. Had a final report for the recovery grant that we got for twenty-six thousand, six hundred, sixty dollars, and that was submitted. A few weeks ago. And then we. Um, the town administrator and I worked on. Getting the additional information that. The mass culture, mass cultural councils. Um, facilities, fund, grant process. Needed, requested from us. And we submitted that for the August sixteenth. Deadline and we should hear later in the fall.
Bitch.
And I. Don't know if. I expect that there will be a library building committee coming, but I haven't.
Yeah, I talked with Mike today. So. Yes.
Okay.
Sometime this month.
Right. So that's all I have.
Okay. Alright, I don't have anything. Um. On two oh seven Main Street, so we'll move on to policy review. And prioritizing.
I um. Included in your packet, just the list of the policies that we have or had in place. With a notation about the acceptable use policy that they're waiting for the town of Dayton. Policy to be approved or updated.
Okay.
Um, we haven't made much headway, but I wanted to tie that. Loop. Up.
Mm-hmm.
Since we had mentioned it in a prior meeting. So I wanted you to have a list of the policies. I think going forward. There are. The Massachusetts library system. Has a very good resource page on, they have a policy. Um, library, if you will, for example, policies and for the types of policies that. Libraries should have. This library's. Policies may grow. You might need. Additional policies in the new space.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
So um, just to keep that in the back of your mind as a resource. Cause I'm sure that like. A meeting room. Might come into play over there where it's not, has never.
Right, exactly, yeah.
Been relevant.
Hmm.
For us in the past, so. I don't know if you wanted to prioritize or if you want to take that away. Just to have it and refer to it, but. I just didn't want to keep it hanging out there.
Yeah, no, thank you, thank you. I'm pausing to wonder whether there's value in. In the absence of any other urgency to hold it till the new director comes on board.
I think that makes.
So that he or she can have, you know, some input or at least orientation, it would be part of orientation to go through these.
Right.
Yeah. Thank you.
And. I didn't put it on here, but in that vein, um. I was working on the action plan or trying to work on the action plan for the next fiscal year, but I didn't. Cut it. Just. Because.
Sure. Okay. Yeah, so perhaps we can. In our next meeting. Our next meeting, we could talk a little bit more about this process. Um, well, some, anybody have thoughts now? Wouldn't mean to dismiss it for now, but.
I prefer to wait. Me too.
Yeah. Okay. Be more late on that. There was nothing that you saw any urgency to, right, that we should.
Um, I think.
I didn't.
I think maybe looking over the. Computer use or internet, however we have it worded.
Oh yeah, that's a bit old.
That's kind of old, that just might be worth looking over.
Yeah.
Um. But everything else, I don't. Know that. I mean, we've gone this long with it. But I think that's probably the one. That I would have. About what I. You know, not my priority, yeah. If I had to pick one.
Yeah.
Advised twenty-one years ago.
No, no.
Oh, sorry, the fourteen. That's still. That's still a long time ago.
Yeah.
Nine years.
It is a long time ago.
Okay, well. And um. Obviously, revision dates, the option date revision. No. No next revision dates, but that's what we could work on is. Um.
Right. Or even just changing the format, I know it's a little bit cumbersome. After.
Yeah.
With some of that.
Yeah. And we'll move on from that to new business statistics.
That's included in your packet. Kind of pretty good months. Of August.
Yes. Good, yeah. Busy summer. Compared to last year, good. Good summer.
It was a busy summer.
Yeah. Did we also see that in any of the programming?
Um. You know, I. I think anecdotally, we probably did.
Mm-hmm.
There wasn't a. We had um. We had to reschedule. A program that we were having in the summer, so in a sense. Especially for the adult side, we didn't because of circumstances beyond their control, but I think. Youth Services Programming did pretty well, it was pretty robust and well attended and.
If you can, I came in here, there were.
Yeah.
Activity.
Yeah. With it, and it was. Pretty concentrated on in-house and local. Where lots of crafts and activities built into. Programming instead of bringing in. Performers. For the most part, I think. For, for all of it.
Any, any other comments or questions about statistics? Okay. We'll move on to the trustee by law, um. Add a. Base section on liaison to friends, we don't.
We don't have it, but when I did go back. And look at other. Library trustee bylaws. Most, I didn't see any specific language for a liaison position to the friends. I saw mostly people would. Include it in like their subcommittee, like they would have subcommittees. From their boards and that would be listed. In the bylaws. So I didn't know. How to go about. If you wanted to. Affirm that in the bylaws, where it would fit. In the organization of it. Or the appropriate language for it. It was very um, committee driven, other than.
Okay.
So I don't know if that's. Necessary, or if it just hasn't been done, or I didn't see it in the right. Places. I looked at the examples of um, on the NBLC's. Trustee page where they had bylaws listed.
Mm-hmm.
They had quite a few different examples.
Well. Yeah, I, I think it's, it's a good point that it may not need to be added to. The bylaws per se. And it could initiate outside of the bylaws by having the friends. Invite the trustees to assign a liaison. Like. Be. You know, obviously, we couldn't, there's no point in having a liaison in our bylaws. Unless the friends wanted us to have one. So. It would seem that if the friends. Initiated and made a request for a um. A trustee representative as liaison, and that's all we'd need to do, we would vote on that and decide who it is, because this. This originated from the realization that. Rita was attending the meetings.
Mm-hmm.
And so why don't we formalize it, but we could formalize it. In the other way, by. Asking the friends to. Um, invite the trustees to on. Sign a liaison. Would work, and then we just will run that request. Only we have the friends here.
That's fine with us.
Yeah, you'd be very polite not to let speak during the meeting, so thank you. But when we get to the friends, you can feel free to. To speak to that if you'd like. Yeah, cool, thank you. Um, and you may need to take that back to the friends anyway, so. Um. Alright, so we will move on then to, there's a staffing issue on Saturday, October twenty-one.
Yes, um. Even if I were still here.
Mm-hmm.
No one can work that day. People are away, or um. We just don't have the coverage for that day.
Just have to say, due to a staffing shortage. Library will be closed that day.
Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure you were aware.
And can I? Interject something here since we're doing this? Um, I was here the other day and I'm talking to. Um, Laurie and Tripp. And um, they were telling me about. November eleventh is on a Saturday.
Yeah.
Uh-huh.
And you're closed on. Friday. But Thursday. The town offices are. That's the day they're closed, the eleventh.
Yeah.
So that's. That day. And the eleventh will probably have to be closed too.
Yes, good point.
Because they said something about, well, we, the eleventh opening, and I said, no, that's a federal holiday, you're not gonna read that. You're just going by because of our situation, you're gonna have to be closed, and that's not a problem.
Yeah.
You go with the flow.
Right.
Alright.
Okay.
I guess as we wouldn't get them, the library wouldn't get a lot of business anyway. Because of the holiday.
Right. Um, but Thursday.
The.
The. I mean, Thursday is not a holiday for most people, it's just the town employees. Um.
Because it would typically be observed on the Friday, most, most government.
They have.
Be closed on Friday, yeah. Um, yeah, but we should clearly be closed on the eleventh, they. You know, they do a ceremony here at Veterans Memorial Park, and it would be. Probably insulting to have the library.
It's just that I know that should be put out that due to. The town employees being observing. The holiday because Friday is closed, that the library will have to be closed on Thursday, though. Ninth.
Yes.
Alright.
And the, be closed also on the eleventh in recognition of the holiday. Yeah. State aid?
I'm working on it, I expect it'll be completed. Sometime early next week.
Okay.
Um, that also requires the signature. I wanted to make sure that was wrapped up.
Thank you. Is that any trustee can sign that, or the chair?
Um, they, they designate the chair, but any trustee that is available considering it. If you're not.
Sure. I'm. I'll be around, just. Future reference, that's, that's what I thought. Um, laptop replacement?
Um, usually we try to replace a computer, a staff computer every year. And I was. Holding off. Hmm. But I, I don't think I'm able to, but I, I felt awkward about. Making that call. In the position that I'm in, so I wanted to um. The tech services laptop. Should be replaced.
Yeah.
I wanted to make. Sure that you were in agreement with it, or. If you wanted to wait for the next person, or.
I'm, I'm fine with it, does it require a vote, or you just? Want to get.
I don't.
Confirmation.
No, I suggest.
Typically, you would do that anyway, you're just trying to be cautious about. Appearances, whatever, so that's fine, yeah, it's replace it. No need to wait. Succession planning, outstanding tasks.
So I'm mainly concerned with some programming that has already been scheduled for the future.
Okay.
And it, I'll probably talk about it later, um. And I think I can. Ask staff to help with running that, and, but I. Um, there's only a couple of things that are going. My bigger concern is the um. And it's related to the two oh seven Main Street is the. The ALA grant that we got for twenty thousand dollars for accessibility.
Mm-hmm.
We need to have. A community conversation. With, about accessibility, what, what residents. Would like to have for accessibility in our own space. And. When I initially wrote the grant, I was. My plan was to include. The commu, the Commission on Disabilities.
Mm-hmm.
With the conversation as well as other. Partners, but they were specifically. That commission. To um, be a partner to the conversation. I've been watching that commission be in a state of flux.
Uh-huh. Who's the chair now?
Um, I'm not sure. I, I don't know if um, former selectman Pachico is still involved in it or not. I don't know who the chair is, um, I know. That's just part of it, um. I can ask for an extension to see if they'd be willing to help us with that, but that's one of the big things that's on my radar. I have. Scheduled a meeting with the town administrator on Tuesday to specifically discuss that. Because um. You know, we, we wrote that for two oh seven Main Street specifically. So I just wanted to um. Hand that. Into a larger lap.
Yeah, no, thank you, I think it certainly needs to be in. Um. Maybe looking for trustees to play. A more significant role in organization.
We, we need to have at least one community, a facilitated meeting.
Mm-hmm.
On. What the community would like to see for accessibility. To see, and to see if it aligns with. Some of the, the. Requests that we put in to the ALA, so some of it was like. Um, technology for the, for computers over there to assist with low vision. Um, the ramp going to the stage. Um, equipment for the doors so that they were automatically open, and you know, those kinds of things that were highlighted, but. Um. You know. Are those priorities, do they match up with what the community wants, so that's the basic. And that is, there's a report due in November, but I'll see if I can get more time for that. And explain the situation here.
So the report would include um. An accounting of what's happened with this listening session or.
I think it would be. Yeah, memorializing the.
Yeah, well.
You'll have to ask Mike who's on the committee, who's chairman. You know, what's left of the committee right now.
Right.
They just appointed um.
Mr. Hershey.
Yes, Mr. Hershey last night. Last night, but I don't know who's left.
Yeah.
And I know Selectman Mello is probably. She's on both of our. She's on the library building committee and. She's the liaison for Commission on Disabilities, so we might be able to. If that's not a feasible option, we can probably work with her. To get the ball rolling, having a conversation.
Your job.
The, right. Her public, her role as a public health nurse, she's probably the best avenue at this point.
Yep.
It's only just talking out loud that I'm.
So is it a building committee? Issue as well?
I would think so.
Yeah.
You know, um.
Building committee.
If I were.
For this month.
Still in place, I probably would be reporting back to the building committee, but.
Okay.
But I will, I, I am going to talk to him about it, and I'll see if we can buy some time.
So when you talk to Mike. He'll talk about this being on the building committee agenda.
Yeah.
Just that, even if it's. Just an FYI. You know, I think we could. We get all the planets aligned, we can get it done.
I think.
Without an extension. And because I, I don't know that there'll be a large turnout and.
I didn't have one for the first.
Yeah, so I think, I think they need to get it done. Um. And then report on time.
Alright.
Yeah. Other succession planning tasks?
Um, I'm. Been working with Brett to take on some of the administrative things that have to happen, payroll and. Bills. Um. And you know, they're thinking ahead to. How to staff the library.
Mm-hmm.
Um. Going forward. Right.
So I, I think the, the trustees until a director is hired. Um, may need to have some. Responsibility for, I guess that's, the question is. Where does staff go in the absence of a director? Is it, is it the town administrator, or is it the trustees? Um, should there be a circumstance that requires that kind of? Authority, I would, you know, I would say that, and I think we need to put something together, you know. Jocelyn, you and I should talk about like some. A memo or an email to staff saying, you know, this would be the protocol would.
I am, yeah. If, um. I know most. Places will name an interim or an acting in place, I don't know if. How you want to proceed. Going forward, but um. Or if you want to have a protocol. As you said, or how you want to handle it.
Yeah, that's the. Yeah, I think that's something to talk to Mike about. Um, or is it, it's really our decision, but you know, with. The interim. An interim assignment. Or acting, because they, they differ. Um.
Right.
We need to know. Um. And we need to decide that.
Yeah, because I think when. Becky took over for um. I mean, it worked in the uh. Or, or um. It was, I think she was um. Acting. On the selectman pointer, she was acting.
Um.
Assistant.
Yeah, in a circumstance where they're appointing authority, so.
Hey, guys, how you doing?
So, we're, we're the appointing authority, not the selectmen, so it's our call. To. Appoint somebody acting or interim.
Right.
And. Um. Among the staff, the only positions are bargaining unit positions, that has implications for.
Right.
So. It still would involve the, the town Karen, or the town's human resource officer, so. Um. I hadn't started counting the days, but now I guess I should.
Fifteen.
Thank you. Uh-huh. So we may need to have another meeting to talk about that, and we can talk about it here, but um. Let me give it some thought. We both want to give it some thought, if you have thoughts now, it's fine. But we should um. Nevertheless, you're, you're, you're working with Brett. On certain.
Yeah.
Um, tasks. Um. Administrative tasks. So my, my immediate question about that is. Because it's a bargaining unit position, can we do that? Um, without. Appointment as an interim. Or acting. And so that's a question. We should get answered. I'm sure she's willing to do it. That's wonderful, but I'm moving in. Want to respect. So I'd like to look at the contract and see what it says. Yeah, I think we'd want to do that. Just to see what. We want people working on a title. Without being properly compensated, in the end, that's what we're talking about. Okay. Happy to acknowledge that on camera, so we'll figure that out. Yeah. And anything else? Yeah, okay. Um. Makeup of the director interview. We will want to start talking about that, the. Um. The, the initial closing has been posted?
Yeah.
Posted, good. Two weeks from today, twenty eighth. So that's when we could start reviewing. Resumes, um. We'll want to schedule a day. Can we review the resumes as they come in, or do we have to wait till they're all in on the twenty? Can we review the resumes as they come in, or do we have to wait till they're all in on the twenty eighth? I don't know what process is here.
I don't, I'm not sure either.
Okay.
I will, you do say. It's a rolling. Process starting the twenty eighth, so I suppose you could.
Those are coming in the mail, right?
They're going right to um.
Yeah.
The selectmen's office.
Okay, so there's no online portal to do that. Paper.
It's either paper or email.
Got it, okay.
So it will go to. Yeah.
Yeah, and we might wanna have, sounds like we'll likely have a meeting. Before the end of the month to review the resumes to. Screen them. Maybe great job, so if we could have your eyes on some of those, but again, just sort of cautious about. The process of hiring now. That uh. Being of consistency and in the approach, like.
Right.
We have, we insert you, Jocelyn, but then. You know, you, when you leave, you're not part of the screening, is that fair to later candidates and? Yeah, that's. And I don't know how things are stringent, things are. Here in the town, but if they're like they are for me for the state, that's. Want to be consistent.
Yeah, I agree with that approach.
Okay. All right, but nevertheless, the the makeup of the interview committee. We can consider that here. My first question is, do we have all three trustees?
An open session.
An open session, we'd want a representative of the friends.
I um I've just seen that. For the first round, it's more of a committee. And then when it gets to a second round or a finalist sort of situation, it's an open. Meeting.
Oh, okay, right.
Um I don't know if that's how you want to. Package. The interviews or not. I also know um interviews for one of the positions upstairs were done in here. And it involves um. Karen and the interview process, as well as the the departments that were. Reviewing the candidates. I don't know if that's helpful or not, or. I was hired before open meeting law was really um.
Yeah.
What it is today.
We need to get some guidance from N B L C, because because we're we're in a different situation as the appointing authority. With library director and so other parts of um governments. Are not. Necessarily part of that, they can be by invitation from the boards, but um the trustees ourselves could. Three of us can meet with the candidates and make a decision and be.
Right.
But we wanna be inclusive and representative in that effort, so certainly the friends and um. Yeah, beyond beyond that, I don't know, what what are others thinking?
Well, you mentioned possibly Ken. Which I think is a good idea, cuz he has worked so hard to get a library.
Yes.
Yeah.
And um I think he would be good. And fair, yeah.
Probably, he grew up near the Swansea library. Yeah, okay. We don't wanna get too large with. Ways to decide whether we need all three trustees on the first round. Um I think we just, it's a lot easier.
Yeah.
So we'd have like a. There's any, there's, you know, you could have a ten, twelve person committee in.
And you get two minutes.
But if you have. Free trustees, a person from the friends and Kevin Pacheco is fine.
Yeah.
That is a a workable member.
Yes.
And you can let friends probably decide who they, cuz you have some. Followed by people, you know. I can think of three or four people, me too, but.
Okay. Um but that can happen. I'm thinking of it like a screening, a screening meeting where we're looking at resumes. It would be, and and whether that's a trustees only function, or is it the trustee, is it the entire committee? I mean, I suspect we have considerable discretion on that, because the three of us could meet and review them. And then. Nevertheless, for interviews and then. Me and the committee, we've gotta come up with the interview questions. I I would guess there's, there's some good resources at other libraries for questions that they've asked and.
And you don't know how many people you're gonna get, how many applicants you're gonna get.
And so we would need to find, ideally find some questions that have been sort of tested in in interview setting. In coming from my my state position, questions need to be reviewed and approved by H R. I don't know that that's the case here, but we wanna be. Careful about the questions that they're not leaving or, so that's why I would. I would, I think we'd benefit from listening to questions. Either from M B L C, don't wonder if they just have a question bank, they just learned that the state has a question bank, that's why. Like, here's a list of all the approved questions and you look at what are the, and what are the um. Were the uh skill sets or, you know, qualities that you're looking for, and then there's sort of questions related to that. I'm not able to use those outside of the state system, because that's when I first. So, but there might be something similar we can draw on for the questions, either um for the libraries that have hired. You were just interviewing, so you might have known that there were some questions.
I, the town might have some as well, some generic.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
That cuz they've been interviewing.
Yeah, we, that's good, yeah, we'd want some generic questions, and then we want some. I'm sure M B L C can help us with that, um or or another library. Worked out a trade with Swansea, you for their question.
Three words to describe yourself. That was one, the only one I really remember. Cuz it was pretty different.
Interviews today, and one of the questions was basically. Describe the circumstance in which you took um critical feedback and how you dealt with it. And so after, you know, a couple of people answered the question, I said, this is a tough one, because. You wanna be careful about self disclosure and saying, you know, something like um. Yeah, my boss one time said I was too like dominating and intrusive in meetings, and so told me to dial it down a notch. So this is what I did. That's the kind of thing you might wanna share in interviews, so anyway. Okay. Still a little work to do, you've got some time, but we obviously, I think we share an interest in um filling it as quickly as we can. Um so I anticipate we'll have a meeting specific about this. Um this work. Um before the end of the month, a timeline might be, cuz it's it's a rolling process, so we could. I would think in in early April, not early April, early October. Schedule um some interviews, if we have good candidates. You have enough candidates, qualified candidates to do that, we actually only need one, so. So I would mean, you know, getting a meeting together to to review the questions. Um just reviewing the process, maybe we could schedule it so that Karen could be here to help us with. Whatever um. Some of the mechanics of hiring in the town, be able to help it to go. What'll be best, so we could have a meeting, just sort of thinking. Better done prior to this, but have a meeting to review resumes, to review questions. To um make sure we understand the. The town's process and how our role um as as an appointing authority. Uh would would play into that and um you know, whatever requirements the town might have regarding um. Onboarding, making an offer, a Cory check, things of that sort, um so. Goodness, we have it posted. All right, so we wanna find a date, I'm thinking. We indicated two weeks from today as being a date, what was that date? No, but what was the purpose of that date again? Where the posting say, on the twenty eighth, that that would be the first point at which we would start re- reviewing. So that would be like the first, so that would be a good date time to meet. May need to be, you know, a little bit earlier so that Karen can be here. So. All right. Twenty eighth maybe. Three. Thursday the twenty eighth or three. I mean, I can check with Karen. Want to Jocelyn, I help with that. Have you checked with her for, just explain where we're um. Yeah, we should send for guidance from her. So on the twenty eighth, we'll be meeting at three, we can change that, but meeting at three to review resumes. Um review the interview questions, a little bit more about the process. Um select candidates for a first round of interviews that would take place um. And first. The second night is the holiday. Week of the night.
Well, I have to, I I have to go to lady, I can't.
Okay.
Is out, October.
The night is the holiday, so maybe the. And those could be during the day. Too many.
And um do you wanna invite Ken to be part of that group?
Yeah.
Okay.
If we should, uh if you can ask, how would how would that work for the friends in terms of you having a meeting and and. Uh does he have anything of representative from the friends?
So we don't meet until October twelfth, so that after the fact.
Okay.
What I could do is I could send an email out saying, you know, that he would be interested in serving on the director. Search committee, I guess is what you're gonna call it, um to get back to me by a certain date, and I'd get him in touch with you.
Great.
Hopefully, we don't have to do a certain. Yeah, we can be flexible if needed, no, I think we just need to see what we have for, yeah, I think it's sort of better, so thank you.
Yeah.
Anything else about the interview process? Scheduling. Yeah, I think that's, I think we got it covered. It serves myself privileged not have to have dealt with this.
Truly.
Yeah. All right. Trustee conference, October twenty one.
There in one of the orientations is that day at the Shrewsbury Public Library and. They scheduled a conference for the earlier part of that day.
Oh.
Full day.
Okay.
I don't know if that's something you were planning to attend, I know we had talked about it in the last meeting. But they've added on a conference.
Signed up for that.
I can do, yeah, I did too, but I can do one or the other, but not both, not all, but it's four days before I have my surgery. Stuff I have going on.
Was there also one on the Cape?
There is, I don't have for both, I didn't have the dates for that.
Okay.
But that was the orientation, it wasn't like the. I don't know. But. The conference is gonna hold compared to the orientation or.
I see.
Yeah, I think I just saw this.
Eastham, October five. Number at Eastham, there's Thursday, October five in Eastham. Shrewsbury slice.
And I can't do this, cuz California is coming to prison. Kids.
Big state.
Only three of them.
Uh anything else about that then, Bill?
I just wanted to point. Yeah.
And so what was the, the orientation, this is prior to the conference, the orientations in the afternoon.
Orientations in the afternoon and the conference is in the morning.
What's the conference about?
I don't know.
I did look. Strong and carry on for your libraries, for your community, for you. Long before the COVID nineteen pandemic, libraries struggled to deliver community response or programming and services in its tight budget. Chris Canagio Silkit is a public health practitioner and is going to be. The speaker, the theme is called Finding Joy in Tumultuous Times.
Already found that, so you don't need to go.
So they're thrilled to have him as the speaker, but that's. How do we as library trustees stay strong and carry on to ensure that our libraries, our communities and ourselves have the freedom to read? Based on evidence-based research and for lived experience. Doctor Chen a soul kit offers you a three-step plan and a whole host of resources. To advocate for your libraries successfully and joyfully.
Sounds good.
Is anybody planning on going?
Might, it is if I'm there for the orientation, then I I. Go for the conference, or I might just go.
Are you planning on going?
No, I can't, that's not a good day.
Yeah. I'll have to talk to Ron because I can't leave Joe without a car all day.
Oh, I see.
So if I may have to bite the bullet and stay all day.
Uh huh, okay. Okay.
At least then I could check off trustee training.
You go.
Yeah.
All right. Any questions or public input before we go to update from the friends? Combine two into one. Exactly four.
So, as you know, we're in full swing right now, preparing for the golf tournament.
Okay, there's always a pun intended. A better alike, okay.
That's the Sunday, um, golfer registration starts at eleven thirty and it's a shotgun startup in one o'clock, I believe. Um, right now, we're making out really, really well with it. Um, we have seventy-two hundred dollars in sponsorships alone. Uh, we have fifty-six ballers signed up and we have somewhere in the mid thirties, I don't remember the exact. Thirty-five for dinner. So. It's gonna be very well. Profit's gonna be very well on it, um, all of the money from that golf tournament is going to be earmarked to the. Uh, donation that's gonna be going to the new, the building account. That's really all I have for you guys right now. This has been the biggest thing since we started planning this in June. Um, I do have to say Kevin Smith from Poxer has been a huge help. Getting this done, if it wasn't for, if it wasn't for him, this wouldn't have happened because none of us know the first.
We were filling up the booty bags the other nights and we said, what's this?
It's the first major fundraiser for us since COVID. Um, as you know, before COVID. The big fundraiser for us was the Taste of Dayton and we just. We wanted to bring back the taste of Dayton after COVID, except the economy taint and we just. We can't ask businesses to. Yeah, um, when they're struggling, when they're struggling already and having to raise the prices like they are. We just couldn't ask them to continue to do this fundraiser year after year, um. There are other issues with it too, but I'm not gonna discuss that on camera, um. But that's the biggest thing. We have our annual meeting coming up on October the twelfth. Um, I will say, I don't know if any of you, I know you already know this, but I don't know if Ron or Ian know this. Um, Karen Cannon has stepped down as vice chair, um. It's bittersweet for me because she has been my champ, my vice chair for four years now. So, um, I have somebody willing to step up, I'm hoping others will step up too, so we can have an actual election this time. Um, but other than that, that's where we are right now, um. We're gonna get back into. Kind of put the bricks on the bricks for the new building on hold while the golf tournament was being planned out, because this has been, this has been an all summer affair. And getting it planned out and.
Just well, talking from someone today who runs, they run one every year. And she said, this is the hottest part, the first year, and once you've done it. And you continue to do it. They've been doing it for a few years and they made a profit of twenty thousand dollars. So it. And Kevin kept, because a lot of the people. Were skeptical because they didn't know anything about golf. And Kevin just said he'd help, help us and he has and it's. Been wonderful, people that are sponsored and.
Right, like I said, thank God for him because he he didn't help us the way he has this, this wouldn't have gone off without it. I'm really hoping Sunday, as it gets closer, it's like, oh, I'm hoping this will go off.
It's gonna be fine, the weather's gonna be fine, it's gonna be.
Oh, I don't even care about the weather. But, like you said, it's the first year, we're working out a lot of kinks, we're gonna have a lot of kinks to discuss at our October meeting when we recap this. But other than that, that's where we are, um. Everything else is pretty status quo at this point.
Sunny, high of seventy-six.
Oh, and the the request is for the. I guess, they didn't decide about. Venmo or anything to give a raffle.
I need to get on an email with Brenda and Kevin tonight. To start that conversation. Um, that's a big thing we're running into is is that we have never accepted online payments. Before and we really haven't run into the need to accept it until now. Um, because the feeling is, and I I as the chair, I a hundred percent agree with it. You're gonna have people show up that don't carry cash, that don't carry checks, and that's gonna cause us to lose out on profit. I'm the same way. Um, I think I take my checkbook out once a year, so. We're looking into it, and the other thing we're looking into it for is, um, we will be doing the gift card fundraiser again for Christmas. So that would be a big, that would be a huge help, but we could. So. That's all I got right now, um, my only question is, is on the um, interview committee for the director, are you looking for one friend? Or one?
I think one, we're looking at five people.
The only reason I ask is because I believe in the Friends bylaws, that it's the chair that has to serve on that commit, any committee. So we'll see how that go, we'll see how that goes, or I might designate.
Yeah, okay, so.
Other than that, that's all I have for you. Unless you have questions. But man, I will bring the. Um, trustee liaison up at the next.
There's gonna be a lot of nice raffle items. A lot of nice raffle items.
That's great. Yes, and we're doing the raffles a little bit differently than we have in the past. They're selling a sheet, we're gonna be selling instead of the individual tickets like you used to see at the Taste. We're selling them by the sheet. Reader, I wanna say there's twenty tickets on a sheet.
Twenty, twenty-five, I can't remember, but yeah.
And we're selling the sheet for twenty dollars.
It's it's kind of like what they do with the trees. And when I was talking, well, it was Adele Call that I was talking to today about. The golf tournament, and she said, she was, you know, naming some things, this is what you gotta do, and I go, yep. And one of the things she said was for the raffle to get those. Instead of everybody writing them. And said, yeah, that's what we're doing.
Is it too late for donations for the raffle?
I'd say no.
I'd say no.
We're not, I won't, because I gotta measure the. Button thing, um, but after. Golfers go out, they're gonna be setting up the the baskets and things, so. Up until that time, I don't see why you can't.
No, absolutely not.
Well, thank you, yeah, to the friends and be sure to thank, I'll be sure to thank Kevin. On Sunday, uh, cuz I know he's been.
He's gonna be playing in a foursome, are you ready for this? Mike Mullen, um, Tommy. And who's the fourth one?
I'm very Mike Mullen. Um, Kevin Smith, Kevin, and then. Oh, I can't, it's another town employee and I can't remember.
Aggie, is it Jim? I don't know, it's another time.
I don't know, I don't.
So it ought to be like a comedy show.
With the three of them, that's a comedy show.
If I might add, obviously, the friends group, um, we're disappointed to hear of Jocelyn's resignation and we wish her well. In her new venture.
Alright.
And. They're having one vegetarian meal in addition to the. Somebody I work with, there's a group foursome of women, and this one girl who's vegetarian, and Kevin said, I had to ask him to do a vegetarian.
Good, so this sounds fun. I'll be there on Sunday and get into the swing of things for sure.
Alright.
Alright, uh, personnel resignation of Lisa Mello.
We're losing Lisa. Yeah, compete with a franchise. Um, I heard. I sent you her email, I think, and her last day is November four.
Which.
And we will miss her. Wonderful.
We will for sure. Absolutely. Well, she'll be a patron.
And she'll be bringing your grandchild here to the children's library, and by then we'll be in the new library.
There you go. But at least the next item is the hiring freeze. Which will affect that position. And we, you know, so we all need to. Need to think about, um.
They did not discuss it. You're not discussing it till the next what is meeting.
I was planning on bringing that up with the town administrator when I met with him on. Meet with him on Tuesday. Cuz I I wasn't expecting to see that either. So we'll see. I don't know what, if that. Is going to affect, I mean, it will affect what staff can do.
If I. It wasn't going to affect any positions that are there in place now.
So new positions?
I'd have to re-watch it. But that's what I got from you. And then they tabled it not to discuss it till the next meeting.
Once the next meeting.
I'll get some. Clarification and. So. I I guess, I don't know. I I think the most difficult. Aspect of staffing would be. Our Saturdays for the library. And I don't know. Typically, when we work. The Saturday, we work on a Saturday and one of us, or if it's our Saturday to work, we won't work. One day during the week. So for instance, the staff person who's working Saturday. Was out today. Because they're working Saturday, so there's kind of a chain reaction. And we can kind of handle it. But. You know, it, we do run, this is the first time, like the. October twenty-first day. Is the first time in all this time that we. And, um, that part-time position is someone that works every Saturday here. For the most part. There are some exceptions, but, um, so. That's where the strain is gonna be to staff.
Especially since, until we go into the new building.
So. But. I mean, I. I don't know that I. If both locations could be open temporarily, like, I don't know how. I I just wanted to. Really. Alert you to some potentially difficult decisions that you might have to make. To keep things going and to see. How the staff can. Make it work. It might have to be that this is closed temporarily until staffing is full. It's something I'll talk with the town administrator.
So I asked the girls the other day, and they said, that's, there's sometimes over there on Saturday. The people picking up. And you do have a few children's books over there, but it's not much.
No, it's it's not, but.
Whereas this is more. It's busier during the week.
Right. It might be doable in the short term, just to get through, but.
But if there is. You know. Request for time off or illness.
There's no room, there's, it's it's difficult now when we're fully staffed in two locations.
Check with Michael.
Yeah, I will, I will.
Okay. So we cover these other things, staffing planning and.
I think so, I don't know if I have any answers or recommendations.
When you talk with, um. To say you can. Listen, we may need to have another meeting. Next week is the week of the, um. I'm flying.
Yeah, it is.
Okay. Freaking witch. Okay, so nineteen. Well, we move on to upcoming programs, Nurse Nikki's book group.
Um, the next one is October third, I believe. It's the first Tuesday in October. I can't believe how soon that is too. But yeah. It's it's right, right on the doorstep. They're reading, um, A Discovery of Butches by Deborah Harkness. And there are books available at the library.
And she said it was at Old Town.
We have the Holiday Spices Workshop, which is November thirteen. Also at Old Town Hall.
Six, seven?
Six thirty or seven, I don't know. Time off the top of my head. The Knock on Wood Concert is. Our Cultural Council. Partial fund, I think it's partially funded. But that was the one that we had to postpone due to illness this summer. And that will be Monday, December fourth at Old Town Hall.
Be the Azos.
Better place.
No, I wanted to hear. I'm also gonna miss the Army Navy game.
It was, it was a challenge to. To find a. Date that we could both accommodate. And then, um, the other Cultural Council. Program. Is a special effects makeup. Like a horror makeup demonstration for teens and I've, um. Delegated that to our youth services person. I think, I think it would be a lot of fun.
Should really like. Advertise it to the, like the schools that it's appropriate age appropriate for.
We haven't had it scheduled yet, it was supposed to be, um, in August during the summer. And I. Really dropped the ball on that one.
Better now, it's in school.
So, um, but. I've, um, found that to. They handle, but that's also a cultural council. And those are the outstanding programs that. I have.
Why are we gonna have a table at the Arts Festival?
We haven't thought about it, but I don't know. I think it'll depend on staffing at that point, right?
If there's any space that's.
I didn't even think about it.
Yeah, I didn't either, but I. Didn't ask me either, so.
Probably. Better to have paying vendors for that.
Well, last year she put them in that first greenhouse where there was.
I'll have to, I'll have to look at the floor plan, maybe.
That greenhouse is one street ahead. Usually isn't like a vendor vendors.
I don't know what the capacity. Or staff will be at that point.
That's, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, I, are the friends doing? Uh, anything for the arts festival?
Other than the festival of trees, no.
What's the theme for the Festival of Trees?
Believe in the magic or something along those lines.
They're having a chicken barbecue the night before.
Up for the.
This Leanne says, shoot me now.
It's gonna be out of riches. It's gonna be out of reach as well. I see.
Yeah.
Wow. Oh, it, I bet it'll do.
Hours though, it's not a.
Yeah, it's not a.
Uh, lengthy thing, so. But. So, be interesting to see how that goes.
Yeah, it will be.
Alright.
Because there's gonna be music too, right? I think there's entertainment.
Yeah, we're debating beer and wine thing that I. Uh, but there's. Um. Yeah, the option for takeout is is there and so many people know, just do that.
A member of the Lions now?
No, no, I'm on the, I've been on the committees.
You're the unofficial.
I'm the unofficial, yes, the, as I remember. Been on the committee since the inception of the Arts Festival, so.
It is a great event, I love it, and now that I don't have to work, I love it even more. It's a neat gift there.
Alright, if that's it, then, um, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn, let's get it.
Peter Russo, I make a motion to adjourn.
In lights on a second.
Second and we have a motion and second to adjourn, so we'll vote, we're on honor, I.
Peter Russo, I.
In lights and I.
Being adjourned. Reporting stop.